And welcome to the regular city council meeting of August 20th, 2024. If I could have everybody please silence your phones and stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, Mayor Racy.
Here.
Mayor Proton Brock.
Here.
Councilman Dowd.
Here.
Councilwoman Wass.
Here.
Councilman Clearman.
Here.
Councilman Mahaland.
Here.
Councilman Quarles.
Here.
All of us present. First item on the agenda is to approve the agenda.
I move to approve with an amendment.
Two of us had asked that we have a video shown to us in the closed session. That's not on here. Typically when two of us ask for something, it gets put on the agenda. I'd like to hear why that wasn't.
So what's the item, agenda item, that you're wanting added?
Seeing the body cam footage. Two of us had asked for that.
Attorney, I don't know that that's appropriate for this right now.
Well, first off, it's a matter for closed session. Secondly, I'm not aware whether, doesn't have to be made in writing to council people if they want to put something on the agenda, it's in written and writing and given to the clerk.
It was the week before last.
It wasn't sent to me.
So, well, so it's the motion on the floor is to, I guess, to approve the agenda. Is there a second to amend the agenda?
To put on the original thing we'd asked for, which was to see this in closed session?
Well, the item on, you're making a motion to amend the agenda. Does that have a second?
I'll second.
Okay, then you would take a roll call to amend the agenda. But, I mean, it's not an item that's on there, so.
May I ask a question?
Yes.
Is that, do we even have that prepared for us to do?
No.
Is this something we can put on for us to be able to do in this next week?
There's, that item is one of the items for the council to deliberate in a closed session.
We're going into closed session to talk about that.
Right.
Okay, so.
Close session. Question. From what I understand and what's on the agenda, closed session is about a different legal matter. I understand what is stated on the agenda. Unless there's more to that that isn't on there.
There's two legal matters.
May I?
Yes, please.
Um, yes, so it's both legal matters. The original, the Miller case, and the legal opinion are two legal matters.
Oh, it says and.
They've just been consolidated into one closed session, so you don't have to go back and forth.
Okay, thank you.
Was there, are there any other questions?
So when will be others?
Well, that's not really a question for me, I guess. Is there any other discussion regarding whether you're gonna amend the agenda or not to include this?
Yeah, I'm just gonna, my two cents on this, I hate last minute changes. I'd rather stick to the agenda personally. Certainly, if this was a matter of closed session, we would have an obligation to have it listed as one of those items as being in the closed session. In all fairness to everybody involved, we have not done so. So I, my personal opinion on this matter is, I'd rather keep the agenda as proposed and as advertised to the public. Thank you.
Any other questions before we have a roll call?
All seven of us were emailed on this, so I'm curious why it wasn't put on here and what has to happen to get this out in the future.
I'm not exactly sure what you're talking about, and we wouldn't put that on the agenda like that to begin with. I mean, we're talking about a closed session.
Right.
That's not what, you don't put what you're talking about in a closed session. This is so highly inappropriate that we've been having this discussion.
There was nothing emailed to the clerk.
But, I mean, we do highly inappropriate things here anymore, so.
Well, I guess, I'm not aware of there being two written council, or two council members submitting a writing to the clerk asking something be put on the agenda. Usually that's something that would be reviewed prior to the meeting for its propriety. Something like this, even if I think if it was, I don't know that it would be appropriate to discuss this, since it is one of the things you're gonna be talking about in closed session tonight.
Right, so since it would typically be reviewed, how will we know it wasn't reviewed before now?
I don't understand your question.
Since, as you said, this would typically be reviewed before now, how would the seven of us know it wasn't reviewed before now?
If, if there was a writing, if there were two council people asking the clerk to put something on the agenda, then that's something that the administration would review when they're putting the agenda together.
And I never got, I never got two letters in writing asking for something.
No.
Do you want to explain what, I think I know what you're talking about, but why don't you explain, because that's the reason I seconded your motion. Why don't you explain the two items, the motion and the second that you're referring to? Because I don't want to speak for you.
I don't want to speak for the person who made the motion, but I seconded it.
I did see an email, I was part of an email where a council member asked for something, Councilman Clearman seconded it. I saw that, I believe we were all a part of that email chain.
I think he's referring to your email, Alfred, where you told him that that's not what you were asking for.
I would prefer to see the information as a courtesy, and I think that's what I had stated.
That is the subject of closed session.
Which I believe is why he asked for this closed session.
So. Let's just vote on the fact of whether we're gonna do this or not, so.
Sure, I guess, the roll call would be on whether Councilman Clearman's motion to amend the agenda would be in effect. So yes, would amend the agenda to include that item? No, then, no, it would not be amended, and then you'd have an additional roll call vote to approve the agenda as written unless there's another motion to amend that's seconded.
Motion to amend the agenda for, yes.
Yeah, so can you just do a roll call?
Yes. Mayor Proton Brock, this is to amend the agenda.
Do you want the agenda amended or no? Who believes is?
Are we prepared, we're still discussing, right? Are we prepared?
No, we're not discussing, we're voting.
Was there another item of discussion before you go to roll call?
I'm confused.
We're voting, do you want to go, and do you want to do what the motion says to change the agenda?
I believe the motion on the floor is to amend the agenda, but it's unclear, the item that he wants added to the agenda is a matter for closed session.
Correct, correct.
So the agenda would be amended, and there wouldn't be anything added, because that item is a matter of closed session.
Well, well, no. Well, let's, I can provide some guidance in the event the motion passes.
Okay.
If it doesn't pass, then we would move on.
Okay.
Yes.
Councilman Dowd.
No.
Councilwoman Wass.
No.
Councilman Clearman.
Yes.
Councilman Mahaland.
Yes.
Councilman Quarles.
No.
Mayor Racy.
No.
Motion fails. Now we'll do a roll call for the approval of the agenda.
Do we need a new motion for the agenda as is?
Mm-hmm.
And make a motion for the agenda as is.
Second.
That was Councilman Clearman?
Yes.
All at favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Next item on the agenda is the approval of the minutes, two A regular minutes of August 5th. In council, I put before you a correction to those minutes as, as it pertains to the last two motions that you see.
Move to approve, Wass.
Support Dow. Discussion? The last item on the minutes is, the chair adjourned the meeting at 9:09 PM due to safety concerns. First question there, who decided there were safety concerns? And second question, why were four of us left on the floor if that was the case?
First off, I asked for adjournment, I couldn't hear anybody. You actually voted no to for us to adjourn. You created a riot situation in this room, and that's why we had to adjourn to ask this question. I can't believe you've even asked him this question. This, this was a horrible situation that you instigated by putting something on the other floor that didn't, was not appropriate, that I never called you on. So that's what happened.
Want to see the video?
I don't even understand you, dude.
So, so I guess, is there a motion on the floor to pass the minutes and has it been seconded?
He doesn't understand why we.
We have a, we have a motion by Councilwoman Wass, supported by Councilman Dowd, to approve the minutes as presented.
So I guess then you'll have discussion on whether someone wants to approve the minutes as presented or not, and then you'll have a roll call vote.
We're in discussion here, correct? Okay. I also have a question. What are the parameters for this, say, I'm, is there a charter, is there somewhere I can go that's going to explain to me besides the mayor's opinion about the current situation that he finds himself in, to make those decisions on his own, as opposed to a document that I can go to that'll tell me, under these situations, this is what the outcome would be as far as adjourned? I'm concerned that our council is getting to a place where when we don't like the discourse, or we don't like what's being said, and there's a history of that here in the city of Wayne, that we go after the person saying those things. So I'm trying to find out what are the conditions that need to be present for a safety concern that would warrant, and then who gets to call that? Do I get a call of safety concern? If I'm in the middle of a meeting, I did not feel like my safety was in jeopardy at any moment during that meeting. But I need to know now, apparently there is a vehicle for me to adjourn a meeting due to safety concerns. I'd like to know what those are, because I'm having a hard time believing that the only one that gets to make that call is the person holding the gavel.
Can I address that, Mr. Mayor?
Sure.
Uh, that is within the discretion of the chair, the person who by charter is running the meeting. You had a situation at the last meeting where you had people from the crowd banging drums and getting up and yelling and actually physically approaching the dais where everybody was seated. You had situations where people were not allowed to leave the parking lot. And if the chairman feels that the notes is reflected and the minutes are inaccurate, then the chairman is well within his rights to say, that's not why I adjourned the meeting. If the chairman feels that he adjourned the meeting because of safety concerns that he had, then he would probably vote to approve the minutes as presented. It's up to the council to decide what the minutes are gonna reflect. If someone thinks there should be a change in the minutes, they can make that motion. It could be amended, there'd be discussion, and then the minutes, I've seen minutes changed before. But if the question is, the question, who determines, who runs the meeting? The mayor runs the meeting, the mayor is the chair of the meeting.
My question was not who runs the meeting. My question was, where can I go to find what the parameters are that would dictate what a safety concern is? What I'm being told is that whatever the chair decides is what those parameters are.
The chair's got discretion.
That's my question, thank you.
Mr. Mayor, if I may.
Yes.
I, I'm glad that my people on the end here, my constituents, felt safe. I'm happy for you. I did not. I did not feel safe, and I know there's others on here that did not. And I'm gonna tell you right now, that was short of a riot last meeting. And I mean that with all of everything that I have. I walked outside with Debbie to get her to her car. I felt unsafe at this council meeting, last council meeting, because of actions that were taken. I'm glad you two felt safe, I appreciate that. I felt very unsafe. I was worried about my safety, I was worried about others on my, on the council, and I'm angry that that happened. I'm very upset that that happened, and it should not have happened. So no, I did not feel safe. So let's put that on the record. I did not feel safe. I felt threatened, that whole meeting, I felt threatened. I was called out, everything in the book, I felt threatened. So no, I didn't feel safe, just for the record.
Can you speak to why you felt threatened the whole meeting?
You know. There needs to be respect, this needs to come through me, you need to ask to speak.
Through the chair, can you explain why you didn't feel safe the whole meeting?
There was people attacking us.
Through the chair.
Through the chair. There was people attacking us, okay? We were being attacked. This was not just somebody up there talking, they were coming at us. They were attacking us. That scared me, okay? I was unsafe, that's why. I was being attacked, not only personally, but my space was being attacked, okay? And when I walked out, I was still being attacked. So yes, that's why I felt attacked.
Mr. Mayor, sir.
Yes.
Um, if we could get back on track here, the vote right now is to whether or not to approve the previous minutes. Does anyone want to change anything on the minutes? Otherwise, the motion was to approve the minutes as is, it was seconded, I'd like to vote on that if we could.
Yep. Do you want to hear a roll call on that?
Okay. Mayor Proton Brock.
Yes.
Councilman Dowd.
Yes.
Councilwoman Wass.
Yes.
Councilman Clearman.
No.
Councilman Mahaland.
Yes.
Councilman Quarles.
Yes.
Mayor Racy.
Yes.
Motion carries. Item number three is closed session. The city council will enter into a closed session to discuss pending litigation with legal counsel in the case of Miller versus Wayne pursuant to MCL 15.2681E, and to discuss legal opinion by one of its attorneys in accordance with the Open Meetings Act, MCL 15.268H.
Move to approve.
Support.
Roll call, please.
Mayor Proton Brock.
Yes.
Councilman Dowd.
Yes.
Councilwoman Wass.
Yes.
Councilman Clearman.
Yes.
Councilman Mahaland.
Yes.
Councilman Quarles.
Yes.
Mayor Racy.
Yes.
Motion carries. 717.
Yep, 717.
Okay, it's eight forty-one. Can I get a motion to close the closed session?
Motioned.
Roll call, please.
Mayor Pro Tem Brock?
Yes.
Councilman Dowd?
Yes.
Councilwoman Wass?
Yes.
Councilman Clearman?
Yes.
Councilman Maholland?
Yes.
Councilman Quarles?
Yes.
Mayor Racy?
Yes.
Motion carries. Now is time for public questions regarding items on the agenda. Excuse me. Public comment is conducted in accordance with local, state, and federal laws. Each public comment is limited to three minutes, which will begin when the speaker approaches the podium unless modified by a majority vote of city council. Public comments shall not be disruptive nor contain any profanity, racial, ethnic, religious, sexual, or national origin slurs or overtones. Public comments shall not contain defaming or slanderous personal attacks. All public comments should be directed to the city council. The city council will not respond during public comments. Any violation of public comment procedures shall constitute a breach of the peace. If a member of the public engages in such breach of the peace, they may be ordered to be seated immediately or removed from the meeting by the chairperson of that meeting.
Okay, any public comment this evening on items on the agenda? Hello?
I was here for that meeting, and I do believe Councilman Clearman did make a motion. And it's not conducive, it's not on the minutes at all. That was a resolution made and how it passed. But the meeting was abruptly called for no quick reason, no given, by the chair. Going to jump down to eight. B, approval of the resolution regarding the local street lighting. I would like to have a little more information about that because we've been jockeying around three meetings now trying to find what the information is. Last thing is, we want, if you're going to do seventy-five sixty-three in dollars and cents, make it seventy-five sixty-three. We don't want any floating thing as the bill comes in. And that's what we asked of you, city manager. Next is E. It says approval of letter understanding, and then you have the word "letter of agreement." And this is so the supervisor working out the building and engineering can have eleven changes of a uniform. So I hope to see the building and engineering with a nice, fresh tops and City of Wayne and pants also. And it'll really make the department look real well. And I think if we're saving money, you could ask the employees to help. But eleven sets of change-out is quite exorbitant. If you're trying to cost-cut and ask the employees if they could help. Got one more thing to ask. If somebody was in control of that meeting of last, we have a chair, and we have a seating capacity of seventy, and I thought that meeting was a little unruly and should have been controlled better. And if we had a capacity of seventy, it should have been enforced by the chair and other persons who are delegated to do so. You said you felt safe or unsafe, I believe. Councilman Quarles? Yes, it was unruly. How do you think the rest of us felt back there, too? Nobody took any control of it. Thank you very much.
Anyone else this evening? Any other comments on items on the agenda? Anyone? Okay, seeing none, please move the agenda.
Item number four, presentation for A, Gaudi Park Conceptual Design Presentation on the C, Engineers.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I'm John Hennessy, Vice President of Hennessy Engineers. And we have a couple of things on the agenda this evening. First is obviously the presentation about Gaudi Park. And then next will be the decommissioning of the reservoir award bid through there. But I'd like to talk, excuse me, a little bit about the park. And I don't know if we can zoom in on this. Oh, that's okay. If I can actually just point to things, just so the public can see that, and I can speak. Oh, do you? Okay, perfect, because I want people to be able to hear, too, the public. Okay. Middle button, okay. So what I'd like to talk about overall is our overall plan for the pavilion area. Obviously, the pavilion right now is right in the center of the reservoir through there. And what we're looking to do, and we'll have a couple of other slides that are going to follow this, that are going to give people more of a conceptual feel of what it looks like in real time. But I want, this is an aerial view, and I kind of want to walk through our thought process, starting with the center of the pavilion, and then walking out to the east and the west, both sides, through there. So obviously, the pavilion right now is right here. And we're looking to remove the seating area and put the pavilion right in this area, right here where this is. So it has more projection straight out as opposed to a radius projection through there for the sign through. for the sign through there. In some of the next slides, I'll describe the pavilion in a little greater details. But we have a flower pattern. It matches the existing circle that's present through that area, through there. We've got some ramps. We're going to talk about the pavilion. But our theme design goes all the way through. This is the concession stand, the pump house that's going to remain. But some of the things that we're looking to do overall in this plan, and so our goal in developing this concept plan was really to create a roadmap for greater improvements beyond the project that we have in front of us today. And to really, and allow us to really pursue grant money, because now we have a plan and we can say that we've done this so far. We started here, we're here now, but we want to be up here. And this is what, some of the things that we're looking to do is, which is hard to see, is we're changing this parking lot, and we're creating an at-grade entrance to the pavilion area through there. We're creating a walkway that comes through here that meets up with the Mills Trail through there. We're looking to incorporate Second Street for a variety of uses through there and provide this connectivity through there. The retaining wall that you see is going to remain. We're going to put a new retaining wall in, and we're going to create, follow the follower design that we have all through this. And future areas, projects that we're looking at, is creating potentially a splash pad in this area for the public through there. Relocate and update the playscape area and repurpose this area to provide not only enhancements for the pavilion area and the park area, but actually increase access to Second Street, too. So this all becomes kind of a cohesive enjoyment area for the community. If we could go to the next slide? So this provides, if you're looking, we basically are a little bit to the northwest of the center. This is the pavilion through here. The pavilion is forty by thirty to give you some idea of its scope through there. And this shows basically an at-grade pattern of the flower pattern within the community. So there's washed aggregate concrete here, and then this is white concrete that will ribbon it, and then this is a slight gray textured concrete. If we could get to the next slide? So this is another view from there. Some of the things that we're incorporating here, you can see that we do have planter boxes, which are all the way around the circle that we have through there. Those provide a couple of things. They're, number one, they're an accent piece to the circle itself, but it also provides a safety measure. We're also the engineers at Greenfield Village to prevent people from driving on there during an event when we have a lot of people. It's unfortunate that we have to think that way, but this is the way that we do, that we have large groups of people together. We want to look to make sure, we work with police and fire to protect them as much as possible. And if we could do one more slide? So this is kind of a far-out view of this, and you can see that that's the pavilion through there. We are adding a storage area right here, which will provide storage facilities for Dave's Group, DPW, and the bands and things along those lines through there. And then one more slide? And this kind of provides, I think, really the best view of what we're looking to achieve. And so obviously, this is the circle that is out there through there. This demonstrates our flower design through there, but it carries itself all the way through on each side. This is the storage building through here. One thing I want to point out is, this is a ramp that goes up on each side of the stage is a ramp that's eight feet wide for the band to be able to bring their equipment up through there. The stage is three feet higher than the grade of the flower design through there. And then also, we have a nice fence system through there that isolates the band through there. And some of the things that we can really do with the community, with the back, we have, behind it, we'll be able to put banners if there's a substantial sponsor for a particular event. Well, we could also do season banners. We could do banners for Halloween, banners for the holidays, things like that through there. And we're also doing a substantial amount of landscaping in the back through there, which are really directing people to be in front of the pavilion and kind of eliminate the people from being in the parking lot behind the pavilion looking through there. You know, we're kind of taking that away from them and really focusing more onto the festival area through there. Then you can see the planters that kind of come through here on each side. They kind of ribbon that. And we've had, we've done a tremendous amount of work in a very short period of time. I tell you, we represent twenty-six communities, and this community has really been well vested in this project, and it's been great to see. We had a stakeholder meeting with some of the planning commission members, DDA people at Rotary, some residents through there. We've done a tremendous amount of work with Dave's Group and the administration. And I think we are well set on our way to not only develop a great project here, which will really, I think, provide a fresh look to the community with this particular park, but also set ourselves up in the future to get more grant funding, because now we can say we have a master plan. We've surveyed the whole park, we have all of this. And one thing that we're going to incorporate into the project, and we're, no additional costs at all, but we're going to revamp the bioswells there in the fronts, in the parking lot, and make them more harmonious with the plantings that we do with the park. So, and the goal of the project is to do the flat work this fall and then have the plantings come in the spring. We're going to order the pavilion that keeps us in compliance with our grant dollars that we have through there. But we'll prep the park so that once the pavilion is there, all we have to have the contract to do is install it in place. And I'm here to answer any questions.
Mayor, if I may? Yes, through the chair. Just so, I know people at home are following along. Roads that cross this is Wayne Road, which is opposite of Second, parallel, and then Sims, which is the road that you're talking about. What you're saying is, is taking out the steps, retaining wall?
No, we're keeping the retaining, yeah, the steps are not, we're keeping the retaining wall in there because it actually has a structural component.
Talking about the seating that...
Oh, excuse me, the seating, that's coming out completely.
Right, so that's coming out and basically moving the pavilion back, a little bit back, so it's going to project towards the river.
That's correct.
I think everybody at home would know those north, south, east, west the best, I think, which is great, you know? I think it's, I didn't know we had some revisions on the design look. I like what you've got going on there.
Thank you.
And what you, we're still, timeline-wise, you're still feeling confident to the original timeline that you provided to us?
We're looking to put this project out on the street in probably about two and a half weeks, two weeks, get bids in September, and then try to do the flat work this year. Because we're doing concrete work, we're able to go much deeper into the season. And so we really don't see that as a problem. And this kind of dovetails into the decommissioning of the reservoir. We're on the award tonight to award that to a contractor. They're going to start, hopefully by, we speculate that they'll start by September tenth through there. And they're going to leave the site at, kind of at grade, prepped for the next contractor to come right in. So that's how we're dovetailing these two projects together.
Thank you. You mentioned the bioswells, and your intention is not to remove them and turn them into a spot to plant plants in? Because I'm sure you understand that those are made to be native plants that may not look real pretty but have a job to filter the parking lot and to prevent the toxins that they might...
They absorb, too, there.
They absorb, to prevent that from getting into the Rouge River.
No, that's correct. We're still keeping them as bioswells, and they will still function, and they will be in compliance with Wayne County Stormwater Management Ordinance, which is kind of the Bible that has to be followed, that's been blessed by Eagle through there. But the plantings will just be a little bit more harmonious with the plantings that we have around the park.
Okay, but are still going to be native plants?
Yes.
As they were intended to be? And again, I understand the aesthetics, that it would be nice to put annuals or perennials over there.
Oh, no, it's, they're going to be native plants that fit the bioswale requirements of the Stormwater Management Ordinance, which is really what we're driven by.
Okay.
And that is approved by Eagle, just to kind of give everyone the regulatory framework that it works within.
Sure, okay, thank you.
Yes.
Councilwoman.
So the picnic tables that are already there, are those being put somewhere in them?
We're going to remove them while we decommission, but they're being retained.
Okay, just making sure, I know somebody's going to ask what happened to them and where are they going, so, thank you.
Yes. Will the planters be annuals, perennials?
You know, we're looking, I think more, the landscape architect is thinking more about perennials through there, but I'll have to get back to you. And we'll come, as part of the package, a detailed planting list for the council to kind of look at prior to awarding the project.
With the eight-foot ramps on either side of the stage, are we going to have any kind of skateboard deterrence there?
Yeah, so that's the reason for the fence, number one. And then also, what borders the pavilion itself is going to be the washed aggregate. There's going to be an eighteen-inch border through there, which makes it very uncomfortable for the skateboarders to get there. And the reason that we put the fence there with the two gates is, the city can lock the gates, prevent, so somebody would have to climb over the gate to get onto the pavilion during non-access time through there. So we're aware of trying to eliminate this as a skateboard park.
The fence and the gates, are those going to be chain-linked or something pretty?
No, they're going to be PVC wrought iron style. They'll be, so they're maintenance-free is the goal.
Nice.
Yeah.
Last question, what's going to happen to the existing bathrooms that we have there?
We're keeping those. There's been no change to those. The storage building that you see on the far left there is, because we already have the building present there, we only had to build three walls through there. It's just kind of a simple storage building through there, dry storage.
Thank you.
Any other questions? John, I just want to thank you for your guys' work on this. I think this is an outstanding plan. I wish we'd had this about four or five years ago. But I think it's definitely in the right direction where we're going, and I think it's going to be a jewel in this community that some, that people will be proud of. I appreciate the city manager's work and the administration working with you to get us to this point. It's a long time coming, but I think it's something that's going to, and I don't think you talked about two phases, really?
No.
But this is, there's like, you have a plan for a second phase.
That's correct. And I think now that we'll really be able to make ourselves at an eligible point for grant money, because we've made this investment, and we have a plan, and we can talk about how the second phase will complement the first phase.
When you talked about the water feature, that would be a second...
That would be a second phase. And even actually, the paths that come through there, that likely will be a second phase as well. But we're talking with Lori, so we're already looking to make grant applications this fall. And now that we've got the plans to do things, I think we can really present a quality product for the community, for make us eligible for the grants.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Go ahead and move the agenda, please.
Okay, item number five, bid award. Five A is approval of bid award for the Gaudi Park Amphitheater Underground Reservoir Demolition Project. Administration recommends the low bidder, Adamo Demolition Company, Detroit, Michigan, in the amount of three hundred and sixty-five thousand, four hundred and sixty-one dollars with a ten percent contingency, for a total cost of four hundred and two thousand, eight dollars to be paid from the water and sewer fund. And the bidders were Adamo Detroit, Michigan, three hundred and sixty-five thousand, four hundred and sixty-one dollars. Vincon Incorporated Plymouth, Michigan, four hundred and fifty thousand, one hundred and sixteen dollars. Detroit Dismantling Corp., Detroit, Michigan, four hundred and ninety-eight dollars, two hundred and eighty-five. Craken Crushed Concrete Plymouth, Michigan, five hundred and forty-nine thousand. Diversified Escavating and Site Utilities of Ipsy, Michigan, five hundred and sixty-nine thousand, three hundred and eighty-two dollars. A and G Construction Detroit, Michigan, five hundred and ninety-eight thousand, four hundred and thirty dollars and seventy-five cents. Chrisman Constructors Incorporated Livonia, Michigan, six hundred and twenty-six thousand dollars. RJ and J Enterprise Incorporated of Rockwood, Michigan, six hundred and forty-five thousand, seven hundred and seventy-eight dollars. Gibraltar Construction Company Trenton, Michigan, seven hundred and eighty-six thousand, six hundred and ten dollars.
Move to...
Go ahead.
Move to accept the low bid from Adamo?
Second, Quarles.
Just one question, if I may?
Yeah.
I see it's a water and sewer, but is this not coming out of the grant money, or is this separate from the grant money?
Lori, do you want to, or do you want to? Okay.
Separate.
So this is, our grant money's still intact outside of this?
Right, and if you remember right, the original bid that you got on this was two million dollars to remediate, just to remediate Gaudi Park's water reservoir. And that would have been cost prohibitive, even for the water and sewer fund. So it was, the whole project was kind of put on ice, and that's when you were going in between city managers. So when I got here and talked to the team, we decided the best thing to do is to put it out for bid, obviously. And I got to say, Stan Tech was very amenable to us doing that. Basically, they said, we're not really even in the park business. We didn't even want any part of that. We just did it to, because we've been your provider for a long time. We were kind of acusating to your needs. So they were gracious about backing down and letting us do two things. Put the water reservoir remediation out to bid and to put the park design out to bid. So not only would we be saving one point six million on the remediation of the water reservoir, John came in about twenty thousand dollars less than the design build, and his is including oversight of construction, which runs between five and seven hundred dollars a day, which wasn't even included in their hundred and seventy-five thousand dollar bid. So by time this is all said and done, we probably saved about one point eight million on the overall project from what was projected earlier. And we can afford to do the three sixty-five out of the water fund or the four oh two with the contingency. And then we can utilize the whole one point three million that we got for the Gaudi Park project.
Here, if I may?
Yes.
You know, I just, I want everybody to understand that's watching at home, I hope they understand, one point eight million dollars was saved. That's a huge amount of money. And a big congratulations to you, Diane and Lori and Hennessy.
Oh, thank you.
You guys, you rock. And I think this is a really cool project. I cannot wait to get into water pad in phase two. So, but I just wanted to say, I really appreciate you guys working very hard on this. Again, one point eight million dollars was saved.
Thank you.
Just to clarify for people at home, the ten percent contingency, what is that?
As for unforeseen conditions that we may arise, because we're dismantling something underground, and whenever you deal with something underground, there's a potential for unforeseen conditions, and that's to allow us to continue working and negotiate with the contractor in a sense. But we have unit prices for everything through there, so...
And if for some reason, there's nothing unforeseen, which almost never happens, but if for some reason...
That will be a complete savings for the community, that's correct.
Thank you so much.
So I have a question on that. When, because it's the low bid, do we need to say with the contingency in the motion?
Yes, yes, because that allows us to continue working if we were to run into an unforeseen condition. You know, it's a five thousand dollar pipe we have to remove, you know? We have that within the contingency, because what we don't want to do is stop the contractor and get hit with idle equipment costs and things like that, you know, if the contractor, it's unlikely, but you know, we just always want to make sure that we have that covered. have that covered.
So we need to have that revised by the people, the motion maker and the second, correct?
Yeah, yeah, so you would have to make the motion as amended, you'd have to amend the emotion, the motion to include, yes, and the motion makers need to agree.
Mayor, so wasn't the motion for the low bid for the four oh two?
That it was the low bid with a ten percent contingency.
They, they never set a price, it was just the low bid of Adamo, I believe.
Okay, I'll amend that. Approval of bid award for the Gaudi Park Amphitheater Underground Reservoir Demolition Project, using the low bidder, Adamo Demolition Company, in the amount of thirty, three hundred and sixty-five thousand, four hundred and sixty-one dollars, with a ten percent contingency for total cost of four hundred and two thousand, eight dollars to be paid from the Water and Sewer Fund.
Perfect.
And I second that.
Perfect, thank you.
I just wanted to make sure that that was properly done.
Thank you.
Do you want to give us the present to tell us about?
Yeah, you know, I want to kind of explain, because there's a variety of bids that actually went from three hundred and sixty-five thousand to seven hundred and eighty-six thousand. I want the council and the public to know that the three lowest bids were demolition companies, so these are companies that actually are in the business of demoing products through there, and I think one thing that made it a little different on how we were able to bring this project into this type of budget, is working with Dave's group through there and the city administration, we were able to really tell the contractors how to dismantle this in a safe way, and basically what we're doing, and I kind of provided this last, is we're penetrating the roof of the reservoir in twelve spots on the north and south walls, we're dropping in one-by-three aggregate stone, so that's a very large stone that interlocks very quickly, it actually, by dropping, it comes in at about ninety-two percent, and that will provide what is referred to as dead lateral support for the north and south walls, so we can implode the roof at that point through there, and not worry about the structural integrity of the north and south walls. And I think by explaining this to the contractors, the, especially the demolition contractors, they were able to really tighten their pencils, which we all benefit from, and I think the difference really between Adamo and Vincon is Adamo just happens to have a lot of material in-house, that they don't have to go purchase the process, so that's what able to do that. We've talked to Adamo since the bid, they're ready to roll, ready to come out as soon as we're, we will write the award letter, put the ten-day notice out to Eagle for the demolition, and we're looking to get started right away.
Mayor?
Yes.
If I may, just before we, you vote on this, I just want to put out a big, huge thanks to John Hennessy and his people.
Oh, thank you.
No, really, they have done a phenomenal job going above and beyond, I, they heard me complaining about the looks of the bioswales. That's me, that's my father, like, is there not a better way? I understand the function, respect the function, can't we make it more attractive and safer so people aren't falling in it and driving in it and losing things in it? And he said, yes, there are ways to do that, and, and then offered to throw that in at no additional cost, which is just wonderful, after they've already saved us a ton of money on this project, and I can just say, from my experience, I've worked with John in multiple other locations, through Wayne County, and I can speak for his work, his outstanding work.
We have decades of working.
Decades of working together in all the different places we've both been, that's one of the advantages of being older John.
Yeah, that's right.
But yes, and I, and I want to say a huge thanks to Lori, she's been very helpful in this whole process, and Dave Schmidt, and Kirk Malcolmson, and Kevin Hardy, I mean, the, the whole team in DPW and B and E have worked very closely with John too, and it's just been, just a great teamwork, and for all the people that, that came out and gave us their opinions on different things, we've involved stakeholders, because we want the community to be a part of this process, so we've had people come out and help us choose different things, and it's just, the excitement is fantastic, and everybody's really pumped up and looking forward to it, and I think when you come back in the spring with the details on the landscape plans.
Yeah, I think it's going to be really fun.
And so he'll be before you again, and you'll be able to see again what the next step is going to look like, I think, well, I'll be very pumped for next spring, and the concerts are going to be beautiful next year. Yes, that's all I have, thank you.
Any other questions from council? John, I just want to thank you too, this is a huge difference in being able to make this project happen, I, I, I know that there was a concern that we might not even be able to make this happen, have to return the money at, at one point, so this is a big deal for, for our community, and for being able to keep this concert series going, so thank you for all your efforts in the administration, for all their work in, in making this.
Thank you very much, we're very happy to be part of the community, and this is going to be a great project, it's going to be a lot of fun. Thank you.
Okay, can I get a roll call for this?
Sure. Mayor Proton Brock?
Yes.
Councilman Dowd?
Yes.
Councilwoman Wass?
Oh, yeah.
Councilman Clerman?
Yes.
Councilman Maholland?
Yes.
Councilman Quarles?
Yes.
Mayor Racy?
Yes.
Motion carries. Item number six is appointments to boards, commissions, and committees. Six A, approval of the appointment of Kathleen Kitty Monnet of East Lawn Avenue to the Commission on Aging to fill an unexpired term ending October 2025.
Move to approve.
Second, Brock. Either way. Okay, Kitty's a retired secretary at Taft School, I don't even, forever, if people went to Taft School, they know who Kitty Monnet is, and she's also the wife of a former councilperson, Skip Monnet. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
Item six B, approval of the reappointment of Seth McDonald of Meadow Lawn Street to the Personnel Board for a three-year term to expire August 2027.
Move to approve, out, support Brock.
Okay, and I believe everybody knows Seth, he's the pastor over at Hillcrest, and is a big advocate in, in helping our community, but I think he will continue to do a good job on the Personnel Board for us. Any questions on that? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
Item number seven, communications and reports. Seven A, revenue and expenditure report for period ending 2024, this is a receive and file.
Receive and file.
Item number eight, general items. Eight A, approval of the municipal credit, sixteen thousand, five hundred and seventy-seven dollars, and community credit, thirty-five thousand, sixty dollars, contract with SMART for services provided by Nankin Transit for the fiscal year 2025.
Move to approve, Dowd.
Support Brock.
Any questions on this?
I have one statement, I would like to thank Nankin Transit for continuing to be a leader in transit in the area, and for caring for our citizens, thank you.
Anyone else? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
Item eight B, approval of the resolution regarding local and major street lighting district.
Move to approve, Wass.
Support Quarles.
Any discussion on this before we go to a vote? Roll call, please.
Mayor Proton Brock?
Yes.
Councilman Dowd?
Yes.
Councilwoman Wass?
Yes.
Councilman Clerman?
Down.
Councilman Maholland?
This is, there's no discussion on this, this is the, the street lighting assessment?
Yes, yes, I asked if there was discussion and nobody responded, I didn't see, I didn't see a hand.
And through the chair, if, you, you can receive comments still, the roll call hasn't been completed.
So go ahead, so we just.
Roll call, go ahead.
Okay, yes.
I agree with that, we just keep accepting the rates of DPD and SIS, because once we go, I'll turn this, it was how we, it was discussed, so just one, let's just end up.
Yes.
And I, I also think that we should, oh, thank you, I just feel like we should try to work on some kind of a compromise here. I was elected to represent the citizens of the city of Wayne, during the numerous public hearings we had on this, I don't believe we had one person come up to that podium and say they were in support of this. I did hear a lot of people talk about their financial situation and saying that they can't afford this. I think at a minimum, we should suspend this until the study can be done. We heard a lot of residents get up here and say, you're charging me for something that I'm not even benefiting from, there's not even a light in front of my house. Whether that's true or not, I don't know, but it does sound like there were some serious concerns from folks who were saying, you're asking me to pay for something I'm not getting any benefit from. I think we should listen to those voices. Because of Headley, we have been not able to charge the full amount for our, I guess my point is, this year, people look at your taxes, your taxes were assessed at the highest level they could be. I think that we should start working on ways to find ways to trim our budget and to live within our means. The last two budget sessions that we've had, we have accepted every single budget proposal by every department without compromising, we've given everyone everything they've asked for. I haven't agreed with that. One of the comments that Plant Moran likes to say, and I've heard repeated by other folks, we don't have an expense problem, we have a revenue problem, and I haven't seen a comprehensive list on how we're going to solve that revenue problem. So if we have a revenue problem, where is this future money coming from? We're, we're running a structural deficit, we're trying to live within our means, and I just feel like we're going to the residents and asking them to shoulder this burden, and I think as council members, it's our responsibility to present a budget that isn't going to be a burden on our residents. So for those, I'm willing to negotiate, I'm willing, maybe we could split the difference, maybe we make it half of the amount, suspend it for a year till we can do the study, and then when the study comes out, then we won't have folks coming up here to this podium telling me, you're charging me for something that I'm getting no benefit from. I think there's ways that we can compromise, and as a council can come together to offer a better alternative to our residents, other than we need more money, so we need you to give us more money, and I just, again, I didn't hear one person stand up in support of this, I, I, it seems like we're tone deaf if we're going to sit here and listen to that and then vote differently. So I'm looking for a compromise, I'm looking for anyone that would support an idea that's different than what we have presented. If you ask me to present something, I will say, let's suspend this assessment for the next year, so we can do this study, and then when that study is done, we can come back to the residents and say, you're being charged for something that you're getting a benefit from. I understand some folks don't put any value in street lighting, some folks could care less. I live on a dead-end street, I don't even know how many streetlights I have, but they're important to me, I, I feel like it makes my neighborhood safer. So I understand we're never going to make everybody happy, but I think we could do something to make people happier than what we have presented. So those are my thoughts, I would support suspending this for a year, if I, if someone would make a, would second that option, I'd like to throw that out there, let's suspend this for a year, let's do our study, let's see what, what they come back and say, I would consider that, but as it stands here, I can't vote for this.
Anyone else? Go ahead and continue the roll call.
We were at a roll call, you want me to begin over, or just continue on where we were?
We need to, you start over, continue.
Okay. Councilman Maholland?
No.
Councilman Quarles?
Yes.
Mayor Racy?
Yes.
Motion carries. Item eight C, approval of the Twenty-Ninth District Court purchase of a security camera backup system in the amount of four thousand, one hundred and thirty-six dollars from Security Designs of Farmington Hills, Michigan, to be paid from the Court Repair Maintenance Fund.
Move to approve.
Support.
Okay. Good evening.
I'm just here to answer any questions you may have regarding this situation.
Your questions from council?
I just, I'm curious, if I may, Mayor, I think I've sat on here long enough that we've had this conversation before, and I noticed that the big difference is it says backup, system backup, we didn't, weren't cameras put in, new cameras put in, probably in the last five years?
Two years ago. Two years ago.
Software?
Correct.
Okay, and the hardware is compatible with the software as presented?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
So is this an on-curring cost, or is this something that just is a one-time cost?
No, it's a one-time fee.
Okay. Yes.
And about how long should this system last?
Well, it's just a backup to the current one, we have had some issues with the current system, so we need a backup for security purposes.
Okay.
Any other questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Approval of the 2024, 2025 material and recovery license for Broom Auto Parts for three-two-two Walker.
Move to approve.
Second, Quarles.
Okay. Any questions on this? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
Item eight E, is approval of the letter of understanding supervisor, I B E W, regarding clothing allowance for assistant building and engineering director.
Move to approve, Dowd.
Support Brock.
Okay, city manager?
Yes, I can speak to this. This was just an oversight of including the language in the contract when they did the contract, when Kurt Malcolmson was promoted from a building official to an assistant director of the building, he should have been included, it's three hundred and fifty dollars a year, and he should have been included in that, and they just didn't, it was agreed to, but they forgot to put it in the contract, they didn't amend the contract, so you have to have a letter of understanding just to correct the language in the contract, and that's all this is, is correcting the language in the contract.
Yes. When you say they didn't amend the contract, who is they?
Between the unions and HR at the time, it was negotiated, that whoever negotiated that contract.
All right. Any other questions?
And, and to be clear, this is three hundred and fifty dollars for the purchase of foul weather gear is what this is for.
Total, yes.
Thank you.
Any other questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
Item eight F is approval of the storybook walk partnering with Wayne County RISA to take place at the end of August 2024.
Motion to approve, Quarles.
Support Brock.
Good evening, Mayor, members of council, this should probably be a tag-team effort
with myself, the library director, Jody Wallach, and then Dave, so if you guys want to join me. This is something really exciting, that Wayne County RISA has received a substantial amount of money to put this program on, and basically what's going to happen is they're going to put different stations along Atwood Park, and Jody has been kind enough to agree to change the storyboards out, so RISA will be covering the cost of the storyboard, so essentially you can walk along the path and read an entire story, so it's obviously for kids. Jody's kind enough, she's going to change the stories out, Dave's been kind enough that he and his team are going to install, install the storyboards, so we're just waiting for RISA to order them, and then once all, that all comes together, we will get together as a team and make this program happen for our community. Did I forget anything, Jody, you want to add, hon? Dave?
I think you got it.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
You know I'm never going to get to work if you put storyboards in Atwood Park, that's where I want.
It won't be about ghosts, there'll be no ghost stories.
We got to have ghost stories. This is a great program, I think this will be really cool, to help.
I think this will be really cool to help the kids get out and exercise. So I, applause. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you.
Thank you. Yes. How often will the stories be changed out? And is this a year-round thing?
It will be year-round. I've checked with other libraries that have similar storybook walks. Most change them out every month and a half or so during nice weather and a little less frequently during the winter because not as many kids come out. So the winter stories might last a bit longer. I believe Wayne RISA said that they would also help fund the initial set of stories to get us started.
Thank you all. Okay. Any other question? Yes.
And so what happens when one of the storybooks, storybooks go down? Storyboards go down?
We'll do our best to repair it and get it back up and running.
Is there money for us to repair and replace these in this $5,000 budget?
So, so the boards herself are like a metal aluminum case with a plexiglass cover over them.
Okay.
And then the post itself is just a four by four, a standard four by four post cemented into the ground. So the cost to replace a post would not be that much.
Okay. I, I thought these were like digital. I was looking at this thinking this was digital. So these are just like actual papers in there and they just walk through and, oh, how cool. All right, thanks.
Any other questions? Yes.
Did I miss, oh, yeah, August, end of August. Okay, yes. Got it. Asked and answered.
Any other questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you.
Item eight G, approval of the second annual scarecrow fest in Gaudi Park in September. This will be on September 21st, 2024. Move to approve.
Support Quarles.
Okay. Lou, again.
Hello again. We did this last year. We partner with Flowers in the Mitten, Rachel Botu. This was a huge, very successful event last year. The DDA is proud to partner in this event. We're going to have to make some major adjustments this year when we do this. We're going to have to move everything to the north side of Gaudi Park as we anticipate there will be a lot of construction. But everything is on track and we are doing something a little different this year. In past years, way past years, you know, we had scarecrows on the light poles. And then previous administration did not want the scarecrows on the light poles. So we attempted to put them in Gaudi Park last year. And unfortunately, I had to go pick up the head of one of the scarecrows down by the river and pick up the dress of another scarecrow. They were vandalized every single day. So we're not doing that this year. What we would like to do this year is put the scarecrows on the trees on Michigan Avenue from Second Street to Wayne Road. They'll be laid out nicely. Obviously with a lot more traffic, a lot more people paying attention, we feel they won't be vandalized. And it truly is answering what people and what community want by getting the scarecrows back on Michigan Avenue.
Okay. Any questions? Yes.
Going from Second Street to Wayne, with the number of light poles we have, how many scarecrows is allowed for?
We're not using the light poles. We're going to use trees. So it just depends. We have enough trees to accommodate however many scarecrows we have.
And if there's more than that, then will they go down?
If we, if there's more, run them further down Michigan Avenue.
Mayor?
Yes.
Laurie, maybe I'm dumb. Why can't we put them on the light poles? What happened?
So there's an issue with how they get affixed to the light poles. We just had all the light poles painted not long ago. And when you're tying things onto the light poles, you're compromising the integrity of the paint. So we just had decided it was best not to put them on light poles. Plus now, a lot of our light poles have brackets for the Christmas lights and banner arms. So we don't want to mess with that either. So the trees are truly best.
I was asked that question, that's why I asked.
That is why.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions? Did you have a question, Tina? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Thank you.
Item number nine, consent calendar. There's two items, the Commission on Aging meeting minutes of June 11th and the Downtown Development Authority meeting minutes of July, or excuse me, July 9th. Move to approve, last.
Support Quarles.
Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Item 10 is administration reports.
Yes.
Good evening, Mayor and council. Thank you for this opportunity. I was asked if we would oblige our library director, Jody Wallach, who'd like to give you an update on things going on in the library. So let's start with Jody.
Thank you so much. I'll be brief. At the beginning of June, I was here telling you about all of the great things the library had planned at the summer for the library's summer reading program. So I did want to give you a quick update as that wrapped up at the end of August. We had a great summer. Kids, teens, and adults all participated in the summer reading program. We had 569 attendees at our various events at the library throughout our summer reading program. Last year, we had 318 people join the summer reading program, which was the highest number in five-plus years. And I'm pleased to report that this year, we had even more. We increased that by 10%, up to 350 people who joined the summer reading program from little, little ones to senior citizens. There was something for everyone. Far, I went low tech here, far increasing. From even before COVID, you can see the increase each year. I did make a little bet with the staff as well and said if we got to 350 people, I would dye my hair a color of their choosing, which if you missed the pictures, I have proof. I had blue hair. So we had a great summer. We're gearing up for a great fall. Our fall newsletter is available and I have some out in the vestibule for anyone, everyone to take. And lastly, so you don't miss all of these great things going on at the library, I did want to let everyone know that we did launch a new email newsletter. So you can sign up for that. And at the start of each month, we send out an email letting you know all of the events happening at the library as well as some library resources, updates, book recommendations, all sorts of good stuff. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes.
Jody, can, can you tell us how we sign up for the newsletter?
That would be helpful, wouldn't it? Just go to the library's website and there's a great big link right at the bottom of the page.
Very good. Thank you. Okay, next, I just want to give you some feedback from the previous meeting as it relates to comments that were made in the public hearing regarding the lighting assessment. I didn't want to interrupt your deliberations, so, and I had this built into my administrative report. So I do think the information is still valid to make you aware of what we're doing on our side. The, the information was shared and you all saw the fact sheet. It was shared with the, with the people, the residents. The calls that we got came way down after it went out. We still had a couple of people show up at the, the last meeting, a handful, probably. The total increase, $4.48, I believe. And the reason that it doesn't change, I mean, the reason that it changes is because it's whatever DTE charges us. It's a direct flow-through. If we were to put a number that was more or less and then not give the people the benefit of whatever it is, because it actually was up. This started in 2012. The number was up and then it stayed up a little bit consistently for a few years. We put the LED lights in, it came down. DTE petitioned the Michigan Public Service Commission to raise the rates again after we did the DT, the LED lighting, and it went back up slightly. But we're talking about, yeah, about a $4.40, I think it's $4.49 increase to the residents. The primary concern that we have been hearing about is the light on my street isn't good or I'm not, I'm paying for something that I'm not getting. So there's two things that I want to tell you. First of all, the lighting assessment is meant to cover the cost of all lighting, street lighting, and just having a safe lit environment. In the city I live in, I don't have streetlights. It's pitch black. I, when my, when I was 11, when my, when I moved into that house, my son was 11 years old, I'd make him go all the way around the neighborhood because in my little subdivision, in my little neighborhood association of 65 houses, we have ornamental lights. The rest of Levonia in the square mile that I live in does not have them. I would make him go all the way around the long way to his friend's house around the block because I didn't want him walking or riding his bike on the side of an asphalt road with two ditches and no streetlights. It's pitch black and I didn't want him to get hit by a car, abducted or hurt or whatever. So in the city I grew up in, in Garden City, they have lights everywhere. I was used to that. And boy, I really miss the difference of having those lights. So I am thankful to all of you for supporting it overall. The cost to the city would have put about a seven, close to $700,000 punch in the budget and would have caught, we would have had to look at what we're not doing in order to fill that gap. So it does benefit everyone. It's not just for the street, the light in front of your house, but the lights up and down your block and the blocks your kids ride their bikes around and the street, the lights around the park areas and on the roadways, just to make driving safer. So, but there was some areas where people had raised that their street lighting was poor and they had legitimate concerns. So we don't want people paying for, for lighting and not feeling safe in their neighborhood because their lights aren't working in their neighborhood. So we worked with DTE. We took down all the addresses of the people. The first, if you remember in the first public hearing, Director Goan went out in the hallway and she took the addresses of all the people that complained. We addressed most of their issues with the fact sheet. But we made a note of all the people who said that they had inadequate lighting in their areas. We met with DTE. We laid out a whole map. They showed us where all the lights were, where they were LED, where they were old sodium, where they had them in the middle of the block, where they just had them at the end of the block, et cetera. After working with them, I put, I assigned to this project to Dave Schmidt, who does a phenomenal job in everything he does. So thank you so much. And Dave sat down with, with Courtney from DTE. And not only that, but he lives here and he works here. And so he drove all of those locations. And I'm probably embarrassing him. But we took a look at every one of those areas where people complained about the inadequate lighting. And we're working with DTE to bring solutions to them. Some of the streets that were mentioned were Courier, Newburgh, Franklin, Haroon, Mildred, Adele, and Annapolis. So each area is being evaluated by DTE and options for approving lighting are being assessed as we speak. Some of the potential remedies will include adding cobra heads to existing wood poles. Some of them actually have the poles in the mid-span of the, of the block where they only have them on the end of the streets, but they just didn't put lights on them. We don't know why, but we can do that at a very low cost to us. And then there's also areas where DTE, where DPW will trim the trees, that people are not getting the benefit of the light because there's so many trees in the way. So between working with DTE to add lights, replace lights, and clear the trees, we think we're going to be able to improve all those situations that were brought to our attention. And if people have additional issues, then we'll gladly take that report and pass it on to DTE and work with them for a resolution. So I just wanted to share that information with you. And before I, if you have any questions for me, I'll take them. But I have one more other thing if you don't. You good? Okay. Councilman Maholland also asked a question of Clerk Parnell, and she would like to address your question at this time relating to the election.
Thank you. It was asked to provide an update of who is currently on the ballot for the next election in November, who has filed for write-in, and what office they filed for, and if there are any open positions. So currently, for the November ballot, for mayor, John Pete Racy. The two-year terms will be Alfred Brock, Kathy Lawrence, and Donald Quarles. For the four-year term, Kevin J. Dowd, Deborah R. Wass. We've had one person file for a write-in for the four-year term. So that is where we stand at this point. So any questions?
I have more just of a general comment. There's still time. If you're interested in getting involved in local government, there's still time to file. You can get the information from Tina. Tina provided me. I asked questions about write-in because I have had residents ask me about that. So there still is time. If you wanted to do a write-in campaign for any of those positions, it's available. It's disheartening to see that we don't have more interest in our residents for these elections. And I don't know when the last time we've had a primary or multiple people running, but it would be great to see some of the folks who come here to the meetings and are always so interested in what's going on with the city and learning more and asking us questions and telling us how they feel. Hey, there's still a chance and a time out there for you to get involved. And if you wanted to, there's that choice for write-in. And if not, in two more years, there's going to be some more opportunities for you. And thanks for all the information.
Yes.
Of course.
I'll conclude my report. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you.
And council.
Okay, go ahead and move the agenda, please.
Public comments for matters not on the agenda. Public comment is conducted in accordance with local, state, and federal laws. Each public comment is limited to three minutes, which will begin when the speaker approaches the podium, unless modified by a majority vote of city council. Public comment shall not be disruptive nor contain any profanity, racial, ethnic, religious, sexual, or national origin slurs or overtones. Public comment shall not contain defaming or slanderous personal attacks. All public comments shall be directed to city council. The city council will not respond during public comments. Any violation of public comment procedure shall constitute a breach of the peace. If a member of the public engages in such breach of the peace, they may be ordered to be seated immediately or removed from the meeting by the chairperson of that meeting.
Okay, it's already a public comment this evening on items not on the agenda. Yes.
Is it John Genesey, the gentleman that was just here?
Genesey.
Okay. The, I had my hand up when you were asking questions of the council. I wanted to know if that floret thing with, I know, I understand the cement bands. Those are kind of like walkways or guiding them. But I wanted to know if the kanguet or whatever it was that he said about the stuff that went down that was more colorful? If that is punishable by water? In other words, if it rains, will it go down through? And if not, where does the runoff go?
Any other questions on items not on the agenda? Any other questions? Seeing done, please move the agenda.
Comments from members of city council.
Councilman Clerman?
In the last couple of weeks, I've heard a number of things. People are disappointed in me for the last meeting. I put people's lives at risk with my comments at the end. I'm siding with individual people rather than the city. On our banners, it says people pride in progress. People forget that the people are what makes the city. As far as endangerment goes, I've heard people on council that they felt endangered from the beginning of the meeting well before I said anything at all. I can't speak to the individual case of this because it's still in progress. We've been asked by our attorneys not to speak to it, so I won't. It was spoken to extensively in the closed session. So the people who needed to know, know. With that, I'm going to pass.
Councilman Maholland?
Labor Day is coming up, so celebrate wisely. Celebrate with your family. Go out and do it in a safe manner and a respectable way. But let's remember it's about Labor Day. Let's celebrate all the, those folks who have put their labor into our country to make it the great country that it is today. Enjoy some time with your family. And that's all I have. Thank you.
Council will win loss?
I think I'm going to start with the lighting thing. For, for those of you who still are disappointed with the lighting thing and you have made your voice heard here, do remember that you do have the option to appeal with the state. So make sure that you know, we do, we did hear you and I do believe we are running, you know, how can we? you know, how can we make it more efficient, how can we get a better price from DT? So just, just so you know, it's not that we didn't hear you. It's just that we also wanna be able to provide you with things we're providing you with right now, and to not have that assessment would be very difficult. It's seven hundred thousand dollars we'd have to cut out of the budget, so. Um, and so, with that, I would like to say thank you to the administration for all their hard work, and for Hennessy, for everything you've done for the water reservoir and for the Gaudi Park thing, this is just a lot of stuff going on there, and a lot of moving parts, and you guys are working great together, and I appreciate that. Um, and then I hope everyone is, is enjoying the concerts, don't forget there's another one tomorrow. And with that, I will pass.
Councilman Quarles?
Yeah, thank you Mayor. Um, just wanna echo what Matt said, um, definitely celebrate Labor Day responsibly. Spend time with your family, that's what it's all about, is some time, make memories, not headaches for yourself. At Wood Park, I, I just wanna say again, thank you, I'm never gonna get to work. I think that I'll be stopping and reading them every day, so, uh, and just a big thank you to the staff. Dave, you guys, you guys rock, man. I, I say this every meeting, but you do, you guys go over and above, and I am so excited about Gaudi Park. It is, we are on the cusp of something that is going to last forty years, fifty years. Uh, I'll be dead and gone, and it'll still be here. So I'm excited, and I swear to you, I'm gonna get in that splash pad when it gets up there. I'm there, one hundred percent there, and with that, I'll pass.
Okay.
Councilman Dowd?
Thank you Mayor. Uh, just wanted to congratulate the library and our wonderful director for its, uh, meeting exceeding, uh, the summer reading program. Um, this, this all goes to an effort in a, within the foundation itself. If you don't create a welcome environment, you won't be successful in that capacity, and I think you have. And, uh, the library has always been, I think, a, uh, a soft spot to a lot of our residents, and, um, the library itself is beautiful, still is beautiful, it's a unique building. I enjoy the dark, dark woods and the, uh, combination of all the books that are still on the shelves. Still, we still have books, they're, not everything is, uh, digital, but it certainly is, uh, I think our residents probably enjoy the books themselves, and the uniqueness of the library and it inside itself. I, uh, I sit on the Nankin Transit, uh, commission for the city, and I brought with me, first of all, I wanna thank my, my peers for, uh, approving the, the, the financial stipend to go to Nankin Transit. Nankin Transit is a, is a, uh, nonprofit that supports, I'm gonna, I'm gonna say seniors, senior light, uh, fifty-five and older, and/or, uh, handicapped people like myself that need help in the city, to go to a doctor appointment, to go to a, uh, uh, any kind of medical appointment, and also do shopping, they coordinate things like that, to go to, uh, uh, grocery stores and whatnot for seniors and keep people that are able to get there on their own. Um, I also, uh, brought with me some of the numbers on where we sit out of the five communities, just for feedback. But anybody can call Nankin Transit that is fifty-five and up, or handicapped, in any, in any way, uh, that number being seven-three-four, seven-two-nine, twenty-seven-ten. They are starting, they're rolling out a new, uh, software program, and that's, nowadays, software programs only last about five years, and then they either need to be upgraded or replaced. Uh, they went with a new program that's going to, uh, create a lot more conveniences for the participants to schedule, understand when a arrival's gonna happen, um, confirm an appointment, confirm or cancel an appointment, because that's, in transportation, nothing is worse than arriving, and then the person doesn't need a ride. And that is taken from somebody else in some way or capacity. Uh, but year-to-date, which is six months right now, of the communities, which is Canton, Garden City, Inkster, Wayne, and Westland, we're not the biggest, and, but our numbers stay consistent, which tells me that we have a core group of people that rely on it for regular use in some way or fashion. But it also means there's a lot of room to, to increase the ridership from a capacity of Wayne. The ride itself only costs three bucks to the, the rider when they get, when they get on. It's three bucks one-way, so three bucks on, three bucks back is taken at the door. The rest is basically taken, uh, paid for through what we provide as stipends and what, uh, the, the Nankin Transit gets from Semta, uh, as a, as the primary driver of this. Uh, year-to-date, right now, uh, Wayne has twenty-seven-hundred, twenty-six, twenty-eight-hundred, uh, uh, rides or trips that have occurred, uh, out of Wayne. Um, Inkster has fifty-one-hundred, Garden City has twenty-eight-hundred, about twenty-nine-hundred. Westland has ten thousand, just under, just, yeah, just over ten thousand. And Canton has eight thousand one hundred. Canton is the most recent addition to it. What this means is that all the communities that we work as, as a collaboration, if you have a doctor appointment in Canton, it'll take you to Canton. If you have a doctor appointing, appointment in West, in Garden City, it'll take you to Doc Garden City, and so on. And that goes also for dialysis and some regular, so I, there's a lot of, to me, if you have, for everybody at home, if you know somebody that's struggling to get to a doctor appointment, or needs help getting out of the home, going to the senior center in Westland, this is, uh, I think is a viable, uh, smart decision to pursue. Um, and they're, they're more than willing to help support new riders. Just can't be same-day request. It has to be previous day, if not a little bit more. If anybody's interested, contacts, contact Nankin Transit at seven-three-four, seven-two-nine, twenty-seven-ten. They can coach anybody through the program and get you set up, thank you.
Okay, Mayor Protem?
I am going to begin with thanks, and then move on to some announcements. I want to, uh, applaud Mayor Risa, and, um, Councilman Dowd, if I might, sorry, for your work with, uh, Nankin Transit, and the mayor's work with, uh, the CWW, as well as for the partnership that's been established by the staff with the Risa, awesome. And I really, really appreciate that, because it is a clear piece of work in regionalism. It's gonna provide greater cooperation and safety for all our residents, and it's also setting Wayne up to be the hub in this wheel. Let's have some announcements. Flowers in the Mitten was, uh, spoken about earlier, it's celebrated, they are celebrating five years in business tomorrow. The past one-point-five years, the past year and a half, has been right here in the city of Wayne. And in honor of the celebration, Flowers in the Mitten will have five-dollar bouquets available for sale for your loved ones, located at three-four-eight-five-two West Michigan Avenue in Wayne, under the sign that says, "Experience downtown Wayne." Flowers in, in the Mitten is a Wayne experience. Now, also at Flowers in the Mitten, we heard about the scarecrows, well, you can also stop in and, uh, put down your twenty dollars for a new frame, if you don't have one, or ten dollars to register, if you have your frame from previous events. So come on in, and you can participate with scarecrows. Flowers in the Mitten, five-dollar bouquets, and get in on the scarecrow, and please keep in mind, Flowers in the Mitten is a full-service florist, right here in the city of Wayne, available for personal events, commercial events, whatever. Last but not least, on Thursday of this week, from six to seven PM, the Wayne Parks and Trails Heroes will be holding a meeting, ooh. We will also be talking generally about Parks and Trails, so come on by to visit us. It's gonna be Thursday this week, sixty-seven PM, at the City of Wayne Public Library in the Reading Room. And I would like to thank, and give many thanks, to the Wayne Public Library, where you can find great services by great people, so thank you.
Okay, thank you. First, I, I wanna wish, uh, our clerk a happy forty-eighth birthday.
Happy birthday.
And because of that, you are not eligible to ride at Nankin Transit, because you're forty-eight, so I just wanted to make that clear. You're welcome. And, uh, I, I wanted to just mention, th- there's been some articles that came out the last couple of days about atomic waste coming to Van Buren Township that affects all of our communities. Uh, I got notice this, this afternoon that CWW is going to put a resolution together. I know that our council is looking at possibly doing a resolution. And I was also talked, um, with the county this afternoon, and they're gonna give us information, but they're looking to try to have a town hall about this issue sometime in September, but that will be announced here soon. Uh, that, that date has not been, been put forth yet. But there, there is a lot of people that are upset about this, and, uh, gonna try to figure out how to not, how to stop this, if, if at all possible, uh, coming into our area. It's a very, um, very disturbing that this is, continues to, to happen in our communities, and we, we need to try to do whatever we can to, to make sure that this, this stops. Um, with bringing this to our area, on, on a project that, from the fifties, bringing this atomic waste, uh, to the area where we have all this water and, and people, is, is just ridiculous. Um, and it needs to stop, so I, I, anybody that, uh, is interested in that, we'll have more information, uh, shortly on that, but it's, we're at the early stages of that, but we, we got information before it happened this time, so we're definitely trying to, uh, make sure that doesn't, that doesn't happen. Um, and then, uh, just wanna thank the Rotary and, uh, the DDA for all their work with the concerts this year. Uh, concerts are going well, it's the sad part of, we, we got two more concerts left, but that also means that this summer's coming to an end too, so that's the only part about this that, that it is not very great. But, uh, tomorrow is the, our big show for the, the summer. Uh, Your Generation in Concert will be, uh, out here, and they always put out a, a great show, and we get a lot, normally a lot of people out here, so, uh, the weather should be great, so I encourage people to come out and, uh, bring your family and friends out to, uh, Gaudi Park, and, uh, en- enjoy the park, uh, for the last two concerts. And our last concert is Theo Gridiron, who is the, um, the singer for the Detroit Lions. It's interesting, I was in town, I was in one of the stores and passing out flyers, and some, some younger people said, "Oh my goodness, that's Theo Gridiron, he's on Madden." And so if you play video games, that he's known, uh, he sings mad, uh, he sings the, the Forward Down the Field Lions theme song, if you score a touchdown on the Madden game, the same guy. He's been here before, great, great singer, and, uh, it will be, for both weeks, will be phenomenal, and, uh, great experiences for our community, so. With that, I'd like to entertain a motion, do it your.
Motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.